Third of, have you got me twice? Am I now echoing? Or is that okay?
That's fine, Alison.
I've had enormous IT issues since quarter to nine this morning and they were only resolved about four minutes ago. It's all been a bit of a panic this morning. So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the third of October Schools Forum meeting. I hope you've all had a good start to the term. I'll just run through the list of people who are attending this morning. We have Andrew Berry, councillor Andrew Reid, Angela Ransby, Angelo Goducci, Colin Shaw, Darren Woodward, Daniel Jones, councillor Debbie Richards, Emma White, Gordon Jones, Gemma Morgan, Jaclyn Dyer, Julia Granger, Julia Hague, Maria Kemble, Mike Quinton, Paul Ferkin, Rowena Mackey, Robert Lenko, Roz Somerville, Ruth Coleman, Sophie Conway, Sue Prickett and Teresa Spilling. So, good morning, everybody. And thank you all for attending. The apologies for absence, Theresa, you have no doubt sent them to me this morning. And sorry, I haven't had a chance to look at them because, as I said, I only got online about two minutes ago. So we'll note those in the minutes if that's all right with everybody. So if we can now go to the minutes of our last meeting and have a look at those for accuracy and matters arising, please. That was the meeting held on the fourth of July. So if we can take them page by page, page one, page two, Mike, oh Gordon, you've got your hand up.
Let me just make all the buttons. Yes, I'm shown as being attending and apologies. I did, in fact, give my apologies and scrub off attending. Okay.
We will, we will make that update. Thank you, Gordon.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mike, could I turn to you for an update on the pupil projections, please?
Yes, Alison. So the pupil projection, so there'll be a paper on growth and falling roles in November, which will include all of the pupil projection numbers. So that paper will come in November to form.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't know why I'm on the left-hand side of the screen this morning, but perhaps you'll forgive me. Carry on. Anything else on page two? And three? And page four? Five?
Sorry, Alison, yes, me again. On page five, an analysis of other LA deficits and transfers to the high needs block. Again, that'll be part of the budget paper in November. Me and Alison caught up earlier in the week and it's very difficult finding out how much local authorities transfer from their schools block into their high needs block and also the deficit position at the end of the year. I think LA is getting very clever at sort of hiding all of those bits. So we'll bring something in November for that.
Thanks. I put my hand up for page four as well, Alison. Roz Somerville, thank you. Just at the bottom of page four, the answer around the safety valve slightly conflates the two. So the point was that when we were asked to be part of the delivering better value, we didn't meet the criteria particularly for safety valve because it's a percentage of your overall budget, which is your deficit. And at the time, we were put within the DBV and the reference to an agreement with the local authorities providing the additional funding relates to the safety valve, not out the programme. We're on in DBV where there is that criteria to bring back a balanced budget. So whilst we got a million pounds grant as part of the DBV, there was no other agreement. And it doesn't, the balanced budget in year is to do with the safety valve. So shall I just send some wording that might replace what's there?
Yes, thank you. You could send that through to Theresa. That'd be really helpful. Thank you, Roz.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, page six? Seven? Okay, so apart from the changes just discussed, then is everybody happy that we accept those as an accurate reflection of our meeting? I'll take silence as acceptance. Fantastic. Okay, so back to the agenda. Which has just vanished. So we're now, apologies, everybody, I'm having IT nightmares this morning.
This is paper B, which is the approval of the central school services block for twenty five, twenty six, Alison. So do you want me to come in?
I'll hand over to you to present that paper. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Alison. Morning, everybody. My name is Mike Quinton. I'm a senior accountant working in corporate services. And I'm filling in for Sonia Harbin, who is currently away on annual leave this week, signing herself in Rhodes. So lucky her when it's raining outside all the time at the moment here. Okay, so this is the approval of the central school services block budget for twenty five, twenty six. And as Theresa mentioned a little bit earlier, this is a decision-making paper. So there will be some voting at the end of this. So Forum is being asked to decide today to agree the revised reduced budgets in relation to the historic commitments element of the central schools services block. Schools Forum are required to formally vote annually to agree the continuation of funding for each service for the historic commitment segment of the CSSB each year. So we've got, we've got two bits to vote on today. So we've got to agree to the CSSB funding for the services described in Annex A, which is the family support services of 1.7 million and to agree a small element of funding for long-term redundancy and premature retirement costs, which is about twenty, twenty thousand pounds. So the reasons for these recommendations, the DFE, as you will know, are reducing the ongoing historical commitments elements of the CSSB by twenty percent each year. And this is the sixth year of those reductions. And the revised CSSB budgets proposed to not lead to any reduction in services that schools would currently receive as these reductions are then met by savings found by SCC core funding. So although the CSSB is being reduced each year, as you can see, so it was 2.1 million last year. It's reduced to 1.7 million this year. But what Sonia does in her budget setting process is she finds savings from elsewhere to then sort of switch the funding, if you like. So there's no reduction in services to schools. Alternative options, Forum could decide not to approve these savings proposals, which would then require savings to be made from within CYP and within those services, which could then reduce the loss of various services to our schools in Suffolk. But as Schools Forum have agreed this for the past five or six years, then hopefully today we'll agree this moving forward again. So to recap, so the CSSB was introduced in 2018, nineteen, and it includes the old ESG grant, which covered the statutory duties, and it also includes the contribution to combined budget element, which consisted of historic grants, historic commitments. And those historic commitments were based on decisions made by Schools Forum pre 2013, so pre the national funding formula, the first national funding formula as it was. And the reason that the DFE wanted these twenty percent reductions is because each LA had very differing amounts of money earmarked for certain central services. So I think within Suffolk, the agreement was that we had quite a big central services function, which was a good thing. But other local authorities didn't have that because they had different models, they had trading, trading arms and things like that. So, you know, with the historic commitments reducing by twenty percent, obviously it's not ideal. And one of our bugbears is that the high needs block is obviously funded on historic spending. So it doesn't quite match up when one block is being reduced because of historic discrepancies, whereas the other block is still using historic discrepancies, but don't get me started on that one. And so just reading the current guidance still, we think that the twenty percent reduction will continue to happen year on year. So we'll continue to plan for that as we move over the next sort of few years. And you can see in table nine, as I've mentioned previously, you can see what the CSSB budget is for this year, which is just under 2.2 million. And then if you go to table thirteen, you can see what that reduction is due to the twenty percent reduction. So 434,000, should I say. So we've got the family support teams, which is the 1.7 million. And then we've got those historic redundancies, which are the 21,000 pounds. So I think that's, that's it on what Forum are looking at today and what needs to be decided and voted on. And I think Julia is here, who helpfully wrote the bit in Annex A. So if there are any questions regarding the family support services and what that funding still covers, then Julia's around if you do have any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Does anybody have any questions or comments before we vote on this? Robert, thank you.
Well, I know we're going to come to family support services, I think in, in paper B. But they seem to be very good value for money, don't they? Because they seem to be the one paper that is actually rather positive and it seems to work extremely well. I wonder in future whether it's worth putting any more money towards that. Because if the re-referral rate is only what, six percent, seven percent, or only over more than a year, it seems to be really good value for money to me. And I wonder if we've considered, you know, putting more money that way. But maybe Julia can respond to how well it's going and how well it's staffed and how recruitment is going. Thank you.
If I just come in, Robert, sorry, Julia, just before you start. Obviously, this is the historic commitments element, so that is going to reduce. So any additional funding that we need to add into the service would have to be funded through, through core funding at the local authority. So, you know, Julia's overall family support teams is funded by, one, this element of the DSG and then also elements of Suffolk County Council core funding as well. But yeah, that's, you know, it's a good point. And as you say, the service is really good value for money. Julia, sorry.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks for that. Just in reflection, Robert, I welcome your observations and reflections with regards to the service. As Mike said, you know, the funding for the service is made up of two strike three elements. We also have resource for the service through a different grant under a programme called Supporting Families that we have nationally. So that's a national-driven programme. In terms of the return rate, sorry, re-referral rate, you're absolutely right. It's a very low referral rate. Our interventions last up to about twenty, twenty-one weeks with families. And we are, the team is very focused on sustaining support for families. What we are looking for going forwards is to improve the way we work with our schools-based colleagues, our educational colleagues, to try and provide a greater level of support within that area. But I take your comment and fully advocate your comment around the importance of providing early intervention and prevention services and support for families to reduce the need for statutory-based intervention within that. So hoping that from the report that you've got real flavour of what the team deliver, the families that they support, the young people that we support as well, to sustain a form of education, employment and training, especially post sixteen and on the move up to that. And the approach that we take, which is very much aligned with the partnerships approach around taking a science of safety approach, the whole family approach with one worker, one family and one plan for families within that. Okay.
Thank you very much, Julia. Thanks very much, Mike. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. That context's really helpful for everybody. Are there any more comments or thoughts, questions before we vote on this paper? Okay, so can we bring up the voting, please? Does it come up or am I not seeing it? Because I feel like I am double logged on today for some reason.
It's there, Alison, I can see it.
So agreed the CSSB funding for the services described in Annex A, delivered by the family support team of 1.714 million. If you can vote on that, please. Mike, I'm going to have to have your help here because I must be double logged in or something weird because I can't see the voting coming up. So if you can confirm what you can see.
We've currently got eleven votes for yes and none for no at the moment. We've got eleven responses at the moment. So I'm not sure if that's the number we're looking for.
I'm obviously not voting at the moment. I'll speak to, add my yes vote to Theresa, please. Okay, thank you. So if you can bring up the second one, please, which is to agree the funding of any residual long-term redundancy costs of 0.021 million, which is 21,000 in anybody else's terms. So people who are eligible could now vote on that, please. Mike, I'll let you be the scorer.
Exactly the same as the first, as the first vote, eleven. So would you include that be twelve?
So that CSSB funding has been agreed again for this year. So thank you all very much for that. Mike, I'll hold you there because I know the next item on the agenda is the update on the early years out term. Thank you.
Yeah, so Christina was due to be here today just to give a verbal update. I think there'll be a more detailed paper to come along in the November forum, but I think Christina's not very well this week. But when we normally do the year-end process for early years, obviously it's based on the actual uptake and our early years grant funding is always based on estimated numbers. So in July, we had that recruitment, if you like, from the local, from the DFE on the local authority. And when we do our sort of estimate at the end of the year, sometimes we're a little bit out. But thankfully this year, and I think because of the data and the good work of the early years team, we were actually virtually spot on with what we thought our underspend was. So we did have an underspend last year on the early years block of about 600,000 pounds. And I think that's just due to sort of lower take-up on three and four-year-olds. And that was actually what was recruited from the DFE. So it means we haven't got any of those discrepancies that we do have in some years. But in the paper that Christine will bring in November, we do have some reserve money within the early years section of the DSG pot. So I think there could be some good news for providers that we can distribute some of that sort of reserve funding that we've got. I'm not sure on the value of that as yet, but Christine will have that in her paper and that she'll bring in November. So yeah, that's about all I can update at the moment, Alison. And as I said, there'll be full detail in November.
We'll await November and see if there's some good news for our early years providers then. Thank you. Super. Thanks for your help, Mike.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is high needs funding, paper C. And I can see Gemma's logging on. Morning, Gemma.
Morning, Alison. Good morning, everybody. Hello. So as you know, I'm Gemma Morgan. I'm the head of Send Funding and Provider Services. Obviously, you've already seen the paper that I've brought to the meeting, saying it's only for information, there's no decision-making today. But I will run through the paper briefly. And if anybody's got any questions, then do please let me know. Okay, so the first part of the paper was just to inform everybody that we have had to increase the deficit on the high needs block, so part of the DSG. And this is due to two reasons really. One is that we've had a considerable increase in the number of children and young people who are receiving bespoke packages. So I think I've explained before bespoke packages are those packages which we put in place while either a child's waiting for a specialist placement or they need alternative intervention to support them with their future education and development. So we've seen a huge increase in the number of children. It's gone up from 364 to 721 in this, well, in this financial year. Because obviously we look at the financial year, so from the first of April. And also the cost of those placements have crept up as well. So they've crept up by approximately 2,000 pounds a place. But over that amount of children, that is nearly one and a half million pounds. So we've seen a slight change in the pricing, but obviously it's had a considerable impact. And what we see, because the children are so transient in the nature of this delivery, that we don't necessarily see that increase all at once. So we didn't see it for the last quarter, but we're seeing it now. So we've got children who are staying longer within the provision or they're starting midway through the academic year. So unlike our other settings, the bespoke provision doesn't start at the beginning of an academic year. So we did predict an increase in spend, but not quite as high as it has turned out to be. And the other reason for some of our increase is the increase in our temporary small groups. So when we get to a point in the academic year when we know what our demand is, we know what we need to commission, we speak to local schools, which have got space within their current classrooms, and see if they can deliver temporary small groups. So we've set one up at Langer Primary School, which is in Felixstowe, one in West Row, which is in Berry, one in Pipers Vale in Ipswich, and another in Branford Lane in Ipswich. So that's cost us just over 750,000 pounds. So again, that's a cost that we weren't clear on the last time that we did the outturn on this budget. Okay, the second part of my paper, and this was asked for at one of the, I don't think it was the last meeting, but the meeting before. So I've included a table which shows how much funding we get from the Department for Education. And what I've done is I've included the budget before the academy payments are taken off. So it does still show an increase year on year and then obviously our increase in spend year on year. But that just gives you the before and after cost and shows how much is taken for the recruitment for academy places off our actual total budget. The other thing that the paper covers is the top-up funding from summer twenty four. So obviously that's the end of the academic year. And what we do is, what I try and do for most terms, is give you a comparison of how it's grown over previous years. So you'll see from the paper that we've had a fifty-six percent increase on the number of moderated new requests. We've seen a slight increase in the number of decreases as well, which, although it's still a small number, it is something that we do encourage our providers to do. We've also done some analysis on how much we're spending on high needs funding for children with and without EHCPs. And you can see in the paper, it explains that in a mainstream setting, forty-five, forty-five point five percent of the funding is for those with an EHCP and fifty-four point five is for those without. That's in a mainstream setting. However, if we look across all of our specialist, all settings, we actually spend seventy-three point five percent of our funding on those with EHCPs and twenty-six point five percent on those without. So once we look at the whole system, it isn't quite as weighted, it's not quite, you know, it's not quite as weighted to those without an EHCP. We are undertaking trajectory work as well. This is in its early stage. But what we're doing at the moment, we've started to look at trends for EHCPs. As you know, there's been a huge growth in EHCPs over the last couple of years. So we're looking at the trends for that. We're looking at what we're predicting at the moment is whether that's realistic. And we're also building into that information about what the primary needs of the children with EHCPs, what placements they're at, what provision we've got and what provision we need. So it will all build into the SEND sufficiency planning, which is ongoing anyway. So Alison, that was a bit of a whistle-stop tour of that paper. So I do apologise. I feel I spoke a bit quickly. So I do apologise.
Fine, you picked the highlights out. And it was a really comprehensive paper. I think some of the added information, like the information about the split between EHCPs and those children who don't have them, was really interesting because I hadn't seen that before. Do we know, for instance, through the Delivering Better Value Programme, do you have any comparators with other authorities about what their percentage split is typically?
Do you know, it's a really interesting question. Oh, we don't. I mean, it's something that we can try and find out. Because we do, oh, Roz has got her hand up. She might have something more to add to that. So before I say any more, let Roz come in.
Oh, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Gemma. I was just going to say, Alison, we're not required to make, provide element three top-up funding for those without an EHCP. It's something Suffolk chooses to do. So there aren't necessarily that many other local authorities doing the same. And we are, we don't get that many opportunities to meet with others doing, delivering better value. We can certainly explore that with them, as Gemma was about to say, and others, and others. Because of course, the people who do this might not be in DBV.
It would just be interesting, given, I know the need is there. It'd just be interesting though, given the financial pressures. We don't yet know what the review of SEND funding is going to look like, that whether it will be more directed to only towards children with EHCPs or there'll be an appreciation that there's a lot of SEND need, whether a child has got an EHCP or not. I just wondered where we were positioned at the moment, given those unknowns that we've got. But I don't want to create an industry if it's not an easy thing to find out.
And I think like Roz says, we are, we aren't, I mean, we're not the only local authority who do it, but we're one of few that do fund children within our mainstream settings without an EHCP. So obviously, it's making sure we're comparing apples with apples, isn't it? So, but like Roz says, unfortunately, we don't have as much opportunities as we would like to. Because we did all, at the beginning of DBV, we started, we met all of the other local authorities and it was really useful. But that's, that hasn't happened again. So maybe it's something that will be planned moving forward. But we are still in touch with the department regarding the Developing Better Value Programme.
Does anybody else have any questions or points they'd like to raise about Gemma's paper? Gordon, thank you.
Gemma, good morning.
Morning, Gordon.
Thanks for the paper. It's a, it's a general question rather than a specific because I, I, I think I fully understand the demands which you're facing. Certainly, you know, within unity. Certainly, you know, within Unity, whether it's in our special schools and units, hubs and mainstreams, we're seeing a, you know, a real increase in the support that we, which we need to give to our most vulnerable pupils. I think they fall into two groups, you know, those with significant medical and, and learning needs and bespoke curriculums and, and care, and those with really challenging behaviour. And perhaps it's the, the latter actually, which gives, you know, the, the school environment and the, and the teaching staff the, the most, you know, sort of demands. But since, since the, the last meeting, we've had a change in government. It, I think it's still recognised that Suffolk is a really poorly funded county. It's funded on historical sort of basis rather than on current need. And therefore my question is, is our approach to the F40 group or to the, to the government going to change in the, in the coming months and years as to how do we, we address that? You know, I'm particularly reminded that, you know, when I sat in the, in the council chamber, the person sitting opposite me off, off on many occasion was, was Jack Abbott, who's now of course a, the Labour MP for, and I'm, you know, I totally recognise his, his interest and knowledge on children with, with special needs. So it would be really interesting to hear if our approach is, is going to, is going to change and whether the forum or other people can assist in, in supplying some support.
I can see Council Andrew Reader's got his hand up and I know, Andrew, you're involved in F40, so I'll let you give an update. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Alison, and, and thank you for your question, Gordon, because you've really touched on a huge issue for us. As some of you will know, I wrote to the new secretary of state for education some weeks ago to press the case for better funding for Suffolk. We have, it is iniquitous, particularly with our geographic and statistical neighbours who, who fare better. And I only cite Norfolk because there is quite a disparity there. And if we had the same funding per pupil as Norfolk, we would do considerably better. But as you say, yes, I, I am a member of the F40 group. I have copied into all of our MPs, both returned and new, that letter to Bridget Philipsen and I am urging them to engage with government actively. And I will be reviewing with F40 how we can press the case in other ways in addition to what we've been doing already. So I thank you for your support and I will continue to, to press the case.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Any other questions or points for Gemma this time? Okay, you'll be back with us again in November, I believe, Gemma.
Yep, absolutely. We'll be back in November. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, Roz, Roz has got her hand up. Roz, oh.
I, I was just wondering if the minutes could record behaviours of distress rather than challenging behaviour, which is just a way of explaining that obviously the child isn't necessarily choosing to, to behave in that way. I just think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Roz.
Sorry for that.
It's very difficult to maintain the, the most up to date terminology used. And of course, no intent to cause offence to anybody would be meant.
Well, as, as you, as you can probably appreciate, I'm pretty ancient. Sorry about that.
Still very involved and very knowledgeable, so thank you.
Yes, your, your, your thinking and your contributions are always welcome, Gordon. Thank you. Mike, over to you.
Yeah, thanks, Alison. And Darren Woodward just had a question around the 0.5% transfer that we do from the schools block to support the deficit. And it, you know, it's a really valid point around, we've got a potential £100 million deficit at the end of the year and we're asking schools to transfer over 2.7 million to support that, which, you know, just seems a bit of a, a small amount of money to support such a large deficit. But I think it is part of the DBV sort of stipulation that, you know, if we're in that programme, then schools should be supporting that deficit recovery regardless of how large that deficit is. So I thought I'd just mention that in case people are not just looking at the chat.
Thanks, Mike. I was just making the point that it seems almost a nonsense. It's like trying to pay your credit card debt and you're never going to get near it because it's getting further away anyway. We're not even making a minimum payment at 2.7 million to bring it down. So it almost feels like, why are we, that's why I wanted to confirm, why are we even doing this? Might as well give the money back to the schools because it's not bringing down the deficit at all. The deficit is just going much further away.
I think it's a, it's a, it's a valid point. I think, you know, if, if we want to go over the 0.5%, then we need to get, you know, special dispensation from the DFE to do that. Forum would have to agree if they did that, but even at 1.1.5%, for example, which Norfolk pay off, that's still not a huge sum of money. Norfolk's was 1.5% last year and that was about 9.5 million pounds. We know that their deficit was way over £100 million. They had a lot, a large slice. Again, I'll get told off for this, maybe by Roz or Gemma, but it got written off or there was a contribution to reduce that deficit. But it's a, it's a, it's a really valid point. And I think when we have that discussion around school budgets next month, you know, we can, we can have that discussion to see, you know, what that actually means. And but as I said, if it's part of the DBV and we need to do that, then we need to do it. So, yeah.
Thank you.
I think it's one of those things where we have to be seen to be doing something, even if it is a drop in the ocean. Gemma, you've got your hand up. You might be adding to that.
Only just adding, sorry, adding to what Mike was saying, that, you know, there is some other local authorities, some are giving more, a bigger slice of the, of the budget to the overspend. But like Darren said, how much is, is enough to, to make a dent? And I, and my November paper will be to ask Schools Forum to vote again on the continuation of that contribution. So although Mike says that obviously is, there's a stipulation within the DBV, but we also do need to get forums agreement. We wouldn't do it, we, we, we wouldn't want to do it without talking to Schools Forum, which is what we'll do next month. So that's part of that whole paper around the budgets in November.
Thank you very much. Darren, you want to come back? Thank you.
Thank you. So Gemma, we, we can't vote against it then?
Well, I need to check that, Darren, because we've always voted on it annually and we've been, so I, I don't, it's not something we would want to do is not ask Schools Forum, we don't, we wouldn't want to do it to Schools Forum. We'd want to ask Schools Forum to do it with us. I don't know whether we can do it without asking Forum. It's not something we've ever done before and wouldn't want to do, but I, I will double check.
I guess what I'm saying is it's a fait accompli, isn't it? There's no point almost in asking us, even if we have to ask us, because if the DBV says we have to, then we have to contribute the 2.7. My point more is that it's just not even making a dent. So it's almost, I don't mean this flippantly pointless spending £3 million against a hundred million deficit that's increasing.
But as part of our return that we do to the Department for Education, so part of our deficit recovery template, we have to put in there how much is being contributed from the, from the, the, the Schools block. So that's where that, that rule comes from. So obviously I would, I would double check, but I, I would rather come to Forum and ask for a vote.
I'm not asking you not to, just that we can't vote against it really, can we realistically? Because DBV say we have to, so.
But I will double check.
Thank you.
Gordon, you want to add anything?
I've just come back. I mean, it, it just highlights that, you know, certainly since the, the 2014 Act, where demand for send has increased enormously. Funding has barely matched that increase across the country in general and across Suffolk in, in particular. And I think actually in Norfolk, and we keep on referring to Norfolk, I think they've had to reduce some of their funding to mainstream send because of some of the, the actions probably that they've taken elsewhere. But it's, it's just, you know, the, the system needs and has needed for, you know, a decade now more money into the, into it.
Yes, without a doubt. Gemma, you've got to add something.
Just quickly to respond to Gordon, I absolutely agree with everything you've said, Gordon. And, and I think that it's worth noting that Norfolk have actually had to reduce their funding to all settings, not just mainstream, but it's to specialist settings as well. So there's been, it's all, it's published on their website, but there's been some significant changes to how they're funded. And I've had trusts from, we've got trusts that work across the border who have come to us to ask if we're going to do something similar because they were genuinely concerned that because of their budgets have been cut so significantly. So there is big change over in Norfolk.
Thank you. Okay, very, very difficult times financially. But we'll see how things pan out with the send review and see what that brings us later. So any other business? Is there anything that we need to cover today that we haven't already that anybody needs to flag with me? Otherwise, we'll go to Paper D, which is the forward agenda. We have our next meeting on the 21st of November, which is our usual big voting day. So all be prepared with your fingers at the ready for voting at the November meeting. So unless anybody quickly flags anything to me, I'll thank you. Mike.
Yeah, hi, Alison. So just to confirm for the November meeting, so we'll have the de-delegate budgets and the school block funding submission might be a bit different this year because of the change of government. We haven't had any of the draft allocations as yet or the draft authority perform at all. So at the moment, I can't do any of that sort of pre-work that I would normally do to say we can get the agreement in principle. And then in January, I come back with the actual final, the final picture. So that might just be a little bit different. It might be a verbal update. The DSG spend update will have that analysis of stat and regional neighbours around the deficits and any transfers they do do around the Schools Block to High Needs Block. We'll have Christina's early years update and then we'll have the pupil projections and growth and falling roles paper. And that'll probably be Pete Mumford from the infrastructure team to come along and do that. And Roz has just asked me a question outside of Forum, but again, I'll just double check the DBV because I think there's an expectation that local authorities will transfer 0.5%. I'm not saying that you're bound to do that and you could potentially vote against that. But again, I'll confirm that and we can bring that back in November as well in conjunction with Gemma's paper.
Thanks, Mike. I had read that the information about the Schools Block hadn't come out as usual yet. Have you had an indication whether that's related to the budget at the end of October? Or is it completely separate and DFE might release some information to you?
I think it's, I think it's just separate, Alison. I just think because of the, the time of the general election, we normally get everything sort of end of July, just before schools break up. But yeah, that didn't obviously come. So we're just waiting on, you know, what that looks like. I don't think it's going to be linked to the budget, but I, you know, I don't know.
Thank you. Okay, I do a last sweep. Anybody got anything else? Your last chance for today. Otherwise, I'll thank you all very much for your time and I'll see you in November. I'll close the meeting. Thank you all very much. Bye.
Thank you, Alison.
Thank you, Alison.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Alison.